Okay, we'll go ahead and get started with our regular agenda. Clerk, will you please read the cable announcement?
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is being videotaped with closed captioning in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be repeated Wednesday, April 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Thursday, April 20th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can be ordered from the City Clerk's Department and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the...oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember McGarvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
Mayor Terry.
Here.
And for the record, councilmembers, excuse me, Skoakland and Sander are absent this evening.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll have Girl Scout Troops 1004 and 555 to perform the Presentation of Colors and lead the pledge. And then I would invite the audience to remain standing for an invocation by Chaplain Scott Healy of the Sacramento Law Enforcement Chaplaincy.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flags of our country, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you to the Girl Scout troop and to our chaplain.
So, Mr. Mayor, we need to make a change to our agenda, just a small change.
Go ahead.
We need to continue the very last item on the agenda, which is...
15.2.
Which is which?
15.2.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Which is 15.2. And I would move that we continue that to May the 15th.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Do I get...
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ask if anybody came to...
Oh, did we have any speaker cards for this item?
I have no speaker cards on this item.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye.
And for the record, councilmembers Skoakland and councilmember Sander are absent.
Excellent. So, we'll move on to present... We'll move on to presentations. And our first presentation, 9.1, is a proclamation to Redtail Technologies as business distinction award. And I think, Megan, you're helping us with this one?
Bob, you got it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Megan Huber. I am a part of the City of Rancho Cordova's Economic Development Department. As a part of our five-year strategy plan, we are rolling out a Business of Distinction program where we honor a new or existing business in Rancho Cordova on a quarterly basis. And tonight, we are excited to present to you Redtail Technology, one of the newest technology firms joining us here in Rancho Cordova. And with that, I will have Mr. McGarvey read the proclamation. And as well as have CEO Brian McLaughlin and COO Andy Hernandez join us up here.
Well, welcome to Rancho... Give us a sign on.
Sorry, councilmember.
Oh, well.
It should work now.
Hello? Any better? Okay. I'm not sure what's going to sound any better, but you can hear it better, anyway. Proclamation, "The City of Rancho Cordova welcomes Redtail Technology. Whereas Redtail Technology recently completed the purchase of their headquarters building located at 3131 Fight Council Circle, Rancho Cordova, to accommodate their growing employee base..." Growing employees, yes. "Whereas Redtail Technology is a leader in web-based client relationship management solutions for the financial services industry. And whereas Redtail Technology started as a small company in 2003, the company is named for a redtail retriever named Tucker. Whereas Redtail Technology strives to bring next-generation technology to the financial advisory community to help better manage their client base, allow clients to have more time, earn more money, and have more fun. Whereas Redtail Technology prides itself in embodying 'what you see is what you get' attitude, bringing dogs to work and building play into the workplace. As a counterpart of their professional diligence, extreme customer service, and constant product advancements. And whereas Redtail Technology is also very active in local community efforts, with their headquarters underwent demolition, they donated materials to the Habitat for Humanity, who will repurpose, repropose some of the materials in their restored facility. Additionally, fundraising operations will be built to build new homes." I know helping the Habitat for Humanity is great because they definitely need all the help they can get. "Now therefore it be resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby welcome Redtail Technology to the community and celebrates this important milestone in the history of our city at a crossroads for commerce and economic vitality. Witness whereof, our mayor has set his hand and caused the seal of the City of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this 17th day of April 2017. Congratulations and welcome to Rancho Cordova."
Thank you.
No, it's...well, you know, we've been around here for a while and we're really glad to have our new headquarters expand and to really increase our workforce here in Rancho Cordova. It's exciting times and thank you to Megan and the team at EDD. It's fantastic.
Very good. Thank you.
Can we have a picture?
Okay, and with that, we'll move on to item 9.2, a proclamation to the Girls Scout
Troops 1004 and 555 in recognition of Creek Week. Linda?
So, we're going to call on Alan Quinn first to come and tell everybody about Creek Week.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and councilmembers. City Councilmembers, my name is Alan Quinn and I'm Associate Civil Engineer with the Public Works Department. And I'm also the Volunteer Coordinator for our Creek Week activities for the city and I help organize all the events or schedule in volunteers to help out with participating in Creek Week. For those of you who aren't familiar with the event, so I'll give you a quick summary of what Creek Week is about. It's organized by the Sacramento Area Creeks Council. It's a community-wide, county-wide effort to improve the health of our creeks and provide educational awareness activities. Creek Week involves various cities and recreation park districts throughout the area, so it's pretty large and encompasses a large area. This year, Creek Week will take place between April 29th and...I'm sorry, April 21st and April 29th. And it consists of activities geared towards learning about plant and animal habitat that thrive in and around our waterways. This year, Creek Week will be held on Saturday, April 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And there'll be five locations within our city that will be conducting cleanup efforts in our waterways. The first one is Cordova Creek at Daw Street, Morrison Creek at Stone Creek Park, Morrison Creek 1 at Air Park Drive, Tributary 1 at South White Rock Road, and Tributary 1 at Horn Road. In addition, we'll be having a nature walk at the Bear Hollow Reservoir, which will be conducted by a biologist and he will talk about the reservoir, how it works to help with flood managing floods and also treating the stormwater runoff, and then talk about the animals and plants that live in the reservoir. So far, we have 83 volunteers signed up. There's still lots of time, so hopefully we can get a few more volunteers. And I guess, and we've had volunteers that are doing it this year, have done it in the past, and those volunteers include the Girl Scout troops we have here tonight. So with that, I'd like to welcome Girl Scout Troops 555 and 1004 to receive the proclamation.
So, Alan, remind us what day this is all going to take place?
Yeah, Saturday, April 29th, from 9:00 to 11:00.
Okay. Girls, you want to join us? You've already been on camera, so you're not shy now. So, probably in the early 90s, an absolutely wonderful woman named Jo Smith, who was...she had spent years as a steward of the habitat along the American River and along the different creeks. And she lived on Arcade Creek. And she put together a group of people that all became the Urban Creeks Council that Mr. Quinn talked about. And she was an illustrator and she drew pictures of all of the beautiful flowers and the birds and the fishes and all the wildlife along the American River and along Arcade Creek where she lived. And then they just began to put this together to make sure that everyone who lives in Sacramento County would know how special our creeks are and that even if you don't live along a creek, it is still a wonderful thing to want to take care of because of the benefit that it brings to living here in our region. So, this proclamation is really full of a lot of stuff about Creek Week. And Mr. Quinn has already told us about Creek Week. So, I'm just going to read that. "This is a proclamation given in recognition of the 27th Annual Creek Week, April 21st to 29th, 2017. And whereas the City of Rancho Cordova recognizes this week as Creek Week in Sacramento County organized by the Sacramento Area Creeks Council with the theme 'We Are Creeks.' And therefore, whereas the volunteer efforts of community volunteers, including you all, Girl Scout Troops 555 and 104, are vital to ensuring the cleanliness and continued health of our creeks. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize Girl Scout Troops 555 and 104 for your commitment to community improvement through participation in this year's Creek Week Cleanup Day. The continued dedication of you all to Creek Week over the years has been instrumental in making Rancho Cordova a better place to live, to work, and to play." And our mayor signed this and he personally affixed a little seal to it. Did a very good job. And so, we've got one for every one of you. Would somebody like to tell us which creek you're going to help clean up? Do you all know yet? Have they been assigned yet?
Horn Road.
Oh, what? Horn Road, okay.
555 is Horn Road.
555 is Horn Road. Great. That's terrific. Well, why don't you all tell us who you are and what school you go to?
I'm Taylor and I go to Options.
What is Options?
It's homeschool.
My name is Asia and I go to Sunrise Elementary.
My name's Lily and I go to K-12, which is an online school.
My name's Nanaya and I go to Mitchell Middle School.
My name is Jade and I go to Mitchell Middle School.
Great. I have a grandkid graduating from Mitchell this year. So, I want to give every one of you a resolution here. And we have extras. Do you have more friends in your troop who are going to participate and would like to have a resolution also?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's okay. Hopefully, they're not sick on Saturday so they can come and participate, okay? Thank you, girls.
to the Sacramento Self-Help Housing in Support of Fair Housing Month. And, oh, I see them right there. This one's...
I didn't give myself too long.
I don't like holding one of those mics. Okay.
You got it.
So, we have a proclamation here, given a recognition...oh, no, I'm holding the wrong.
One's building, one's housing.
Little different.
Building, housing, right?
Yeah. I like the building, housing.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. "Given a recognition of Fair Housing Month. Whereas the City of Rancho Cordova recognizes Fair Housing Month is celebrated each April across the United States, this year we celebrate the 49th anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, passed by Congress in 1968. A fundamental goal of government is to eliminate discrimination and assure the rights of every resident to buy and rent a home without regard to race, religion, sex, nationality, origin, disability, family status, age, source of income, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or marital status, immigration status, and first language as guaranteed by both Title 8 and the Civil Rights Act." Wow, that was a lot. Okay. "The most recent annual report by the State Department of Fair Employment and Housing found that over 100 fair housing complaints were filed in Sacramento County, which is among the highest number in the state. The City of Rancho Cordova believes that every American has the right to live with dignity in any area they desire without fear of discrimination and supports state and federal protections against discrimination in the sale and rental of housing. The City of Rancho Cordova has established the achievement of equal housing opportunity for all residents, for all its residents, as a goal in its general plan and supports the Renters Helpline. The City of Rancho Cordova supports the education of homeowners, realtors, landlords, property managers, homebuyers, and tenants regarding their rights and responsibilities under the federal and state fair housing law. The City of Rancho Cordova is proud of its commitment to fair housing, recognizes the need to affirmatively promote fair housing in its policies and practices, and will continue to work to identify and remove impediments to fair housing. Now therefore be it resolved that in pursuit of the shared goal and responsibility of providing equal housing opportunities for all, the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby join the national celebration by proclaiming April 2017 as Fair Housing Month." And I've signed it and affixed my seal. I don't know if I can take credit for actually putting that seal on there, but that is my signature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, thank you and everyone in Rancho Cordova. Sorry, I want to thank everyone in Rancho Cordova for supporting this. This year alone, we've already had 287 phone calls. Now, those phone calls, we came up with 11 cases. And out of those 11 cases, half of them were basically dealing with disabilities and the other six dealt with race and just race and national origin. So, I know those families appreciate everything we've done and I cannot thank enough our other partner in this is Project Sentinel. And he's our attorney, which I wanted you to introduce and say a few words.
Hello, my name is Lex Powell. I'm an attorney with Project Sentinel, the fair housing nonprofit in the area. And I'd like to communicate my gratitude...move this up...as well as Project Sentinel's gratitude. Ms. Craft informs me that you, Mr. Mayor, are very supportive of fair housing, as well as Mr. McGarvey, which we want to communicate our gratitude. I mean, me personally, I grew up in Rancho Cordova. I consider myself Rancho Cordovian. Is that the term we use? Rancho Cordovan. Guess I'm not that good. But I want to communicate that I know this is a great community. I know it's a community that people want to live in and it's a community that supports fair housing and supports housing with dignity. I think that the proclamation said it very well. And I just want to make my and Project Sentinel's appreciation for this proclamation be clear. So, thank you, City Council, and thank you, community of Rancho Cordova.
Okay, now, we'll do Giving and Recognition of Building Safety Month. This is on...okay. Do you have anything to start? No? Okay. All right, so here's...this one's even longer. "Okay, the City of Rancho Cordova is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic values of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the building environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play, and worship. Our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by a national voluntary consensus codes and standards developing organization. Our government is able to avoid the high costs and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation. These modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to keep America great and code officials partners in safety...I'm sorry. Code officials partners in community safety and economic growth. The theme for Building Safety Month 2017 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2017 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, work, play, worship are safe and recognize that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. Each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities." And again, signed it and put our seal on it. Thank you. Okay, more tape picture? Okay. We'll move on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent calendar or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk, who's right over here to my right. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon to the podium at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Note, under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comment cards?
I have two cards for public comment. The first from Taylor Garner. Following Taylor is John Rango.
I did not know I was going to come talk to you guys, so I'm a little nervous. But I'm coming to actually address you in regards to a situation that happened a little over two months ago with my next-door neighbor. And it's funny, I actually was just standing there and you guys actually went over this in your special meeting today. And my picture that I took of my neighbor's house is actually in the Things to Avoid, which I think is kind of ironic considering that I'm trying to fight this right now. Long story short, I had a shipping container dumped in my...
Ma'am, actually, I'm going to ask...that's actually going to come up on the agenda?
Okay.
So, like I said in the beginning, for the things that we're going to discuss, we don't take...
I didn't know it was going to come up.
No, no, that's okay. So, that is an item that's going to come up for discussion in a little bit.
Okay, cool.
So, I'll call you back up for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker is John Rango.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is John Rango. I'm the Chief Operating Officer with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Sacramento. And actually, this is in regards to item 15.1, I believe.
Oh, okay. Then we'll call you back up for that. Yeah, thank you.
I have no more cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, with that, we'll go on to council reports. Bob?
Well, right now, I just wanted to say what a nice, wonderful, and beautiful presentation we had with our people tonight who were Redtail Technology and the Girl Scouts and Sacramento Self-Help and the Rancho Cordova Building. It's always nice to be able to give some recognition to people who really deserve it. And they definitely do. Our airshow with the French pilots doing a wonderful job. It was much shorter, of course, than the regular Capitol Airshow, but it was something I hadn't seen before. The pilots were great. Everyone who was there was really glad to be there. And that was one of the nice things, a few thousand people showed up. And that was a great way to have a Saturday. The other thing that's kind of sad is our...part of our history is coming to a close on one of the chapters of our history of Rancho Cordova with Aerojet technology being moved out of the city. But I want to say thank you to Aerojet for the decades they've been here. And for those who are... And for those who are worried about cleaning up Rancho Cordova, Aerojet is still responsible for the 6,200 acres, which are part of the Superfund site. And they'll be working on that and cleaning up the ground and the water under it for as long as it takes. So that's one thing that we don't have to worry about. The city didn't have to pick that up. That's something that Aerojet's responsible for. Just like the Air Force is responsible for the four sites that I know of at Mather, since Mather was also a Superfund site. So we have everything being covered on that. We don't have to worry about that on either of those sites. So that's something that we can watch and see how well they do their job. And they're doing a great job right now. Thank you.
Linda?
So, a couple of weeks ago, I read to Peter Shields School. And I read two wonderful books called "I Wish I Had Duck Feet" and "The Best Nest." And I got a very nice letter from the kids at Room 13 at Peter Shields, which I will share with my colleagues. Regional Transit News is finally positive, or becoming positive. Their financial trend is projecting to add to the fund balance for the first time in three years. And they think they're going to build up an emergency cash reserve of $6 million this year. Regional Transit has been relying on its line of credit to pay its bills, which is never the optimum financing plan for anybody's government. And so they're finding, turning around a little bit, and I will share that with my As Bob said, the airshow was absolutely spectacular. It gave us an opportunity to meet some new international friends that we can add to the airshow for coming events. And I hope everyone had a wonderful Easter, full of family and friends. And even if it rained, there was still lots to do with family and friends. That's my report.
I think I'll start off by echoing the weekend mini-airshow, French airshow, whatever we want to call it, meaning the, I guess his title was honorary consulate from France. And he ended up having to pull double duty and introduce the train heroes that were in town, so Anthony Sadler and the rest of them, and then had to sing his National Anthem and a whole bunch of other things, but he really got into it. But no, it was a fantastic event. I know, I think some estimates were saying about 7,500 people were coming, but I think that was the number of tickets that they sold. I'm guessing it was well over 10,000, if not more. And one of the really interesting things that I had heard was the food trucks were hoping to each do $1,000 at least. And they were still selling food when the thing was over, like, two hours afterwards. People were just hanging out, going through the planes and everything else.
We stood in line for 45 minutes.
Yeah, I mean, they could have had 20 food trucks out there. But it was a fantastic event for what they pulled off and the amount of time that they had to put it together. It was a fantastic event, and again, highlights the partnership with the county and the airshow and Mather, and what kind of an asset that airport still is for us. Because I was just floored. I did not expect it to be that heavily attended. And, you know, while traffic was a little tough getting in, that's a good problem because it means a lot of people came to our town. So kudos to everybody that was involved with that. I'll just give you a quick update on the Air Quality Management District. We are holding interviews tomorrow and later this week for finalists, and probably are looking to select air pollution control officer by the end of this month, so at our meeting two weeks from now. Had the opportunity to update our Moving With the Mayor campaign that we've been doing this year, and went and worked out with our police department last week, and did a quick interview on Good Day Sacramento. We'll be having more things coming out soon, but we did have an Apex Fund Run down at Sunrise Elementary that I and our deputy chief of police and one of our sergeants came to and ran with the kids down there. And we have more things coming up, including yoga, I hear I'm doing at some point soon. I don't know how Maureen gets me to agree to this stuff, but something about a grass skirt, I heard at IFest, maybe, so come to that and learn how to hula dance. I think I'll echo also what Bob just said, you know, it was a sad day last week to hear about Aerojet. But at the same time, it was an economic decision, it was not an environmental decision or other things. And, you know, they're still the largest landowner in our community, and their long-term success of development with that land, you know, really dictates the long-term success of our community. And so we look forward to continuing to work with that company. And now that we have a whole bunch more industrial space, it's probably time to start talking about what we're going to do with that now. And if that's something that we need to work with the county, or talk about annexations, or a lot of other things, but, you know, that's a whole new opportunity now for us to be considering in the long-term development of our community and our region. Was able to attend a couple of events, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before it started raining on everyone, was, there was a tree planting day with our arborist and about 30 volunteers to plant, I want to say about 30 trees. And my son and I went and planted a few to begin with, and then moved over to the Sun River Park Course Volunteer Day, where they finished laying bark and prepping the bollard, the wood bollards out there for painting. We didn't paint because it started raining at noon, and it rained really, really hard. Actually, about 11:00, it started raining. But there must have been about 30 volunteers there for ribbon cutting for the new park horse that was funded by the Community Enhancement Fund, that actually was one of the first things ever proposed from that neighborhood. And it took, you know, up until now, so about two years to finally get it to fruition. But it's a great park horse, if you haven't seen it. They actually have, and I've never, I've seen park horses with, you know, the pull-up bars and a couple other things. They actually have elliptical machines out there, and some other things that I've never seen in a park horse like that. And then Bob and I and David, Linda, I don't think you were able to attend the bus tour. So we did a half-day bus tour, about three-hour bus tour around, three-hour bus tour, around Rancho Cordova and most of our newer neighborhoods. And it was actually, I think, really helpful to a lot of the newer staff that haven't seen some of these neighborhoods, aren't familiar with some of the developments and parks that have been going in in the south area. But that was, I think, very well-attended, and I think it was very productive for a lot of the folks that came. And hopefully, we can look at doing more of those in the future, and maybe even some of our other neighborhoods, more established neighborhoods. And then we did have a Folskordova, two-by-two. We discussed Measure H, which we're going to discuss later on today, around the priorities for the school district there, and what the superintendent was looking for, and also getting an update. It sounds like by mid-next month, the school board could be voting on a new superintendent. And if I believe, just in kind of giving another update, I want to say that we also were told that SacCity Unified was relatively on the same timeline. So probably by the end of next month, we'll know which, who are the two new superintendents for those schools. And then last, I did get a chance to speak on behalf of the city at the Folsom Lake College donor reception to discuss our investment in the PROMIS program and how well that was going. So I think that's it for me, and we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have a whole lot to add. I did participate in many of the events that you all had pointed out. Just wanted to share with you that councilmember McGarvey and myself attended the, with the mayor, the Folsom Lake College donor reception. And I was really appreciative of the talk that Mr. Mayor gave, a very personal and touching story about how community college has played a role in his professional and personal growth. So that's good to see, and I think it's really a testimony to the work that we're doing related to the PROMIS program. But thank you for that.
It's always a pleasure to talk about my experience in community college. And so with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar items. So consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Do we have any comment cards on any of these?
I have no comment cards on these items.
Anything council needs to pull?
Seeing none, I'll move approval of 13.1 through 13.9.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
And for the record, councilmembers Schoklund and Sander are absent.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, yeah, consent public hearing. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. Do we have any comment cards on, anything on the consent public hearing?
I have no comment cards on item 14.1.
Okay. Anything need to be pulled?
If you'll open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. We have no comments.
We have no comment cards.
Do you have anything that needs to be pulled?
No.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
And I will move approval of item 14.1, the PCN letter for the new ratings.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye.
And for the record, councilmembers Schoklund and Sander are absent.
Okay. And just a reminder, item, so we're moving on to public hearing items, and we have continued public hearing item 15.2. So the last thing on our agenda tonight is item 15.1.
No.
Oh, no, I take, I'm sorry, you're right. You're right, we have a 16.1, I'm sorry. Our only item for public hearing is 15.1.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item is an update to the city zoning code, specifically municipal codes sections Title VIII and Title XXIII. A lot has gotten into this effort to get to you tonight, and I would just like to say thank you to our council subcommittee and all those, and city staff that have worked very diligently on this subject to bring this before you tonight. So with that, we did have a brief dialogue earlier today in the study session about this, so I will just go through this rather quickly to hit the highlights of this particular update in front of the council tonight.
And you're going to-
Yes.
-go explain what this is.
Yes, I will. So with that, we'll jump right into it. The zoning code, it is one of the important tools that the city utilizes for creating and building a community. As you see at the top is the city's general plan, and at the middle of all those other things, such as improvement standards, and specific plans and master plans and design guidelines, is the zoning code. And so the zoning code is a very important tool that the city utilizes for purposes of implementing the city council's vision for future development and existing development within the community. Why have a zoning code? Well, because we're trying to avoid things like this from occurring. So there's plenty of examples, but it's very important to have a zoning code for the city to go ahead and make sure that we don't have things like that happen. We're doing our best, and hopefully, we don't have a lot of these kind of examples. The Rancho Cordova zoning code itself was first approved in 2006, when the cities adopted the zoning code to replace the Sacramento County's code for purposes of using it for land use and development regulations. Since that time, there's been more than a dozen updates to the zoning code. The most notable one was in 2009, when a first comprehensive update was done in order to change the zoning map and some of the more extensive changes to the zoning code itself. The purpose of the zoning code, there's a lot of different reasons for having the zoning code, and that is one of the things that is included right up at the front of the document. Won't bother reading all of this, but essentially, it's intended to serve as an implementation tool for the city's general plan, is to facilitate prompt review of development proposals, create a comprehensive and stable pattern of land uses, conserve and protect the city's natural resources, create a transportation network, provide reasonable protection from hazards, and then finally, to ensure compatibility between land uses. When we first started out on this process, we wanted to evaluate our existing code. It is 13 years old, and so as such, it has some, both good, bad, and ugly. And so what we found is that there are good things in there related to variety and opportunities for potential development, such as different zoning, multiple zoning districts, allowable uses, and flexible development standards. As a result of all that flexibility, sometimes there's some internal conflicts and some challenges, especially for the new first-time business user. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that this document is streamlined for efficiency purposes, easy to follow, and easy to utilize as best as possible for the average reader. This is a map of where the zoning code applies, and as you can see, there's a variety of different colors on here because the zoning code doesn't apply citywide. And so that's part of the challenges that we have, and that's why we're intending to simplify some of the processes here in the zoning code update. Our goals for this particular update is, as we kind of hinted to earlier, streamline our development approval process, ensure that the zoning code is an asset versus an obstacle to new business opportunities, eliminate conflicts within the document, ensure proper implementation, incorporate new changes that were desired by the council subcommittee, as well as new legal changes in the law. And then finally, to ensure that council's vision's being implemented. This was a very large process. As you can see, a lot of different departments and faces were involved with this, and so we're very pleased to have worked together on all of this and bring forward to you tonight's ordinance for the zoning code update. Having said that, the zoning code is really just one piece, though, of a bigger picture. We will be bringing to you at next week's meeting, a study session, concepts about the tree ordinance, as well as property maintenance provisions and a property maintenance code. This is kind of the heart of the update. This is an overview of all the different chapters, the 450-plus pages that we are updating and bringing to the council tonight. I won't bother going through all those. I will say that in attachment two of your packet is a complete summary of all the different changes, chapter by chapter, of all the significant updates that were made to the document. And again, these are just more of the details that we've been talking about for Articles 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, and our definition section. In addition to those chapters that we specifically made, you know, comprehensive updates to, we've been talking to the council quite a bit about some specific issues, beekeeping ordinance, urban agricultural provisions, some specific code enforcement items, accessory structures, and personal storage facilities that I'll just quickly highlight for you. Beekeeping ordinance, we've turned that into best practices, and we've established some recommended standards for consideration for doing beekeeping within the city. Specifically, we've identified some recommended standards related to the number of hives on lot sizes. We've also required that they comply with the food and agriculture codes, that they provide an adequate water source so that bees stay where they're intended to stay. And then finally, we're recommending that these bees only be allowed on properties that are R10 in density or larger lots. Urban agriculture is the variety of different opportunities for providing the growing of food on property. We have a variety of different types, ranging from private gardens to market gardens, private and public community gardens, and aquaculture. At the last study session, we had some healthy dialogue about concerns about urban agriculture and private front yards. And so what we've tried to do is make sure that we address those concerns by including additional language in the definition, so that folks can still do ornamental plantings of fruits and vegetables in their front yard and not be considered a private garden that would be subject to the standards. So with the inclusion of that, we think that we've accomplished those concerns expressed by residents and by the council. We've also added language that ensures that a private garden does comply with the city's storm drain ordinance to ensure property, proper maintenance, and appearance of any type of garden in the front yard or otherwise. Some code enforcement items that had a lot of dialogue. The first one is related to hardscape in front yards. There's two examples that we show up there, and one is the overuse of concrete in the front yard area. We're recommending that the impervious surface be limited to 40% coverage of the front yard. And then the other one is related to the picture on the left, where we have merged driveways between properties. We're recommending language be included that has a five-foot setback between those two properties, thereby creating a landscape buffer between the driveways. But we did talk today about specific requirements to go ahead and, where you have a smaller-sized lot that does not have your typical five-foot setback, to deviate from that standard as part of the design review or subdivision map process. And so that has been included in the errata sheet that we've handed out to you just now. That also includes provisions for that setback requirement does not apply to pedestrian connections from the driveway to the side and rear yard property areas. So with those additional inclusions that we added from this afternoon's session, we believe that that errata sheet will help cover those concerns expressed today.
Can I ask a quick question of something else that just came up? Can I ask a quick question of something else that just came up, or that I was just thinking about? Is the sidewalk in front of a home considered part of the 40% of?
No.
It would just be the yard?
Correct.
Okay. That was gonna say, because some of our setbacks are really small on some of our higher-density ones, and if that was, then... Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you.
The other method that was discussed to help property owners meet that requirement for impervious surface coverage is the use of ribbon driveways, and that way we can go ahead and help achieve the 40% maximum requirement there. Those are just two examples of one where it's allowed because the ribbon driveway goes to the side and rear yard where the vehicle that's using the ribbon driveway is actually placed and stored, whereas on the right, the driveway is parked in front of the living room, which would not be allowed because the vehicle is not allowed to be stored in the front yard like that. Accessory structures, this is one that we spent quite a bit of time on. There's a big definition there that talks about the different types of accessory structures. These specifically apply to things such as garages, greenhouses, pool houses, et cetera. These are examples of what we're looking for with regards to examples that we're trying to avoid, and I'll touch on the specific example here after this portion. We're trying to avoid things like that, as well as things like this. So what we're proposing is some more stringent standards that, in comparison to other jurisdictions, you don't typically find. Specifically, we're recommending some prohibited accessory structures such as storage containers. We're also recommending development standards specifically for all new structures greater than 120 square feet as well as under 120 square feet with regards to setbacks and height limitations. We're also recommending specific design standards for those structures in that they are architecturally compatible with the primary residence and not allowed to look something like that. So all accessory structures would have to be designed with materials and building finishes that would look like the primary residence and not be a combination of multiple forms of materials, to put it kindly. Along those lines, though, we do recognize that the home improvement stores do sell prefabricated kits that are typically under 120 square feet that are made out of metal and painted nicely and everything, or wood sheds, tough shed brands, and those types of things that are under 120 square feet, and those would be exempt from that requirement because they are prefabricated and made out of consistent building materials. We've also added standards that talk about specifically the limiting the amount of accessory structures on a particular property. The first two bullets refer to limiting the size of the accessory structures to a proportionate size of the main residence. So if, for example, if you have a 2,000-square-foot house, you would be able to have 600 square feet of accessory structure for the first bullet. If your lot is greater than one acre, that size of the accessory structure would go up to 50%, so you would be allowed up to 1,000 square feet of accessory structure for that one accessory structure. The second, larger bullet, talks about 30%, no more than 30% of the rear yard can be covered by accessory structures. That prevents multiple accessory structures from adding up to taking over your backyard. We've also created a proportional setback standard by height of the accessory structure so that for every foot above eight feet, your setback increases one foot. So the primary setback would be five feet. If your accessory structure is 10 feet, your setback would be seven feet, as shown on this exhibit here. This is just a summary of all those standards for accessory structures. Along the same lines of accessory structures, we further clarify landscape features, which are included in the zoning code but don't really have specific standards for them as far as setbacks. We've gone ahead and added standards that if they're under 120 square feet and under eight feet, then they maintain a three-foot setback, just like accessory structures. If they're greater in height and size, then they would have to comply with the accessory structure setbacks. Moving on to many storage uses, we've brought to the council several many storage projects recently. There was some suggestions about incorporating some development standards related to those uses. We've responded by adding some specific locational requirements, that they not be located within a quarter-mile of existing storage facilities or on primary corridors such as Highway 50, Folsom, and Sunrise. We've also included multiple development standards so that the design and appearance of those facilities are commensurate with, you know, surrounding developments so that all outdoor storage would be screened from public view. So we've had, we've done a lot as part of this update. We anticipate doing a lot more in future annual updates. This is just a list of some of those items that we intend to do, and then we will begin this list starting sometime later this year. So tonight, we're recommending that you open the public hearing, take public comment on the first reading of the ordinance, and adopt the ordinance specifically before you tonight.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and open the public hearing first. And questions from council?
Yeah. On the errata sheet that was handed out, there's just one correction. The top paragraph references artisanal and production of less than a certain quantity. The bottom paragraph references just a standard brewery, winery, distiller.
On page two?
Yeah.
You said at the top?
Right. The bottom paragraph
Of the last correction.
Has an annual production of more than 15,000. However, in that very, in the second to the last sentence, prior to occupancy, you want to delete the word "craft."
Thank you.
It just got carried over from the upper paragraph.
Any other questions of council? Bob? Neil? Okay. We'll go ahead and take the public comments that we had.
I have one speaker card from Taylor Garner.
Erin, while she's walking up here, can you bring up the slide that shows the picture of what she's gonna talk about? I figured you'd want that.
I didn't know it was gonna be on there. I picked a good night to come. So we'll try this again.
Go ahead.
So my name is Taylor Garner, and I'm a resident in Rancho Cordova, and the bottom picture is the view from my backyard currently right now. This happened at 9:30 at night about a month and a half ago when my neighbor dropped this into his backyard, unannounced to us, almost taking out the side of his house and taking out the fence of ours. I came into the planning department on the following morning, March 1st, and spoke to the planning department. They pretty much advised me. They know exactly who he is. He's been in here before, and there's nothing that I can do. If I needed help, I needed to go to code enforcement. So I did. I went to code enforcement, spoke to Ryan Taylor, the supervisor there, who went out and looked at the unit that day, clear in violation that there's, it's nine-and-a-half feet tall, it's almost 40 feet long, and it's bright red. And it's the view out of my window, and it's the view when I'm in my backyard. And when you look at it from the front, it's not much better. I have been working with Carrie and with Ryan for the last two months. They've also looped in the city of attorney who advised Ryan to send out a 30-day notice to have him remove it because it was considered a nuisance. That notice went out, and it has now expired because the planning department is now willing to work with him that if he wraps it in some type of residential siding and puts a roof on it, that they will allow it. My concern is, I have the code enforcement telling me one thing, working with the city attorney to tell him to remove it, issued the 30-day notice, and nothing's been done. The 30 days are gone. Then you have planning department coming back. I got a voicemail from June on Friday afternoon advising me that they're gonna be working with him on possible solutions. How is that a solution? How am I supposed to sell my house and have anyone want to buy it looking at that? The value of my home has significantly decreased. I'm a first-time home buyer. My brother and I bought our house two years ago, as of yesterday, and we bought in Rancho because we work here. My parents live here, and we, as young homeowners, were excited about what the city was doing. They've been working on beautification, working on improving the city. I bought here to do that. I have put a lot of money into my home, my brother and I have. If you drive down my street, which I really encourage you all to do, to go look at it in person, what it looks like, do yourself a favor, knock on my door and come look at it from my backyard, because the pictures really don't do it justice. That's my concern, is I have one department telling me one, I have another telling me another, I have a city attorney involved, and no one can give me a resolution. I'm angry. I'm upset, and to be quite frank, I'm beside myself that how am I, as a first-time home buyer, having to deal with this? How is this okay, and how is the city allowing it? And I just want some direction. Obviously, you guys are making improvements, which are great, but guess what? My issue has become the example, and if it's not removed, what am I getting out of it? Oh, so the next person now doesn't have this happen to them, but I still have to look at it every day. That's my concern. I want some answers, and I want somebody in the city to look at this and really make the decision on what should be done. I don't want to keep hearing from one person, from another person, from another person on what they're doing. I want some consistencies, and I want one answer, and I really want it soon, because what am I supposed to do when I have an attorney that's telling them to issue the 30-day notice? The notice went out. It's past 30 days. I have never gotten an answer.
Ms. Garner, your three minutes has expired. Will you make your final comment?
Yeah, that's okay. I made my point. I hope you guys take a minute to look at it, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Without getting too specific, Erin, can you at least address where we are with this?
Certainly. So what we have here is that that particular structure was installed without any permit, and so as it stands right now, there's, it's not allowed. And so the property owner came in because he did make an investment in that, and he's trying to see if there's an opportunity to do something different under the new code. So we are working with our departments as well as the current property owner that has put the facility on his yard to see if there's any opportunity to make that into something different. If not, it needs to go away, and so those are the conversations that we're having.
So under the proposed code, what would be the remedy to something like that in this case?
Well, it would, I don't know the full particulars because of the height, and then that's part of the other challenges, is that if he adds to it to make it look more like a primary residence, then it would more than likely have to be moved. We'd have to verify that it meant all the proper setbacks, and then the coverage requirements that I mentioned to you just momentarily. So there's no guarantee that he is able to make that. We're giving him an opportunity to demonstrate that he can. If he cannot, then he will be required to move it from the property.
Remove it, not remove it.
Correct.
Okay.
So this is something that, as far as...
It's nine-and-a-half feet tall. Considering the size, its proximity to the fence line and its dwelling unit that's there, I mean, how, they would need a pitch of a roof for so much based on how close it is to the other buildings in the street, right?
Correct. So there's a lot of moving pieces here, and so this is just one, you know, one representation of it, and so what I would, I'm anxious to do, is meet with both property owners and all the affected departments to see what we can do and give a clear direction as to what needs to happen to either meet the code or not meet the code, and give them a timeline to perform and which to do that.
Yeah. I mean, my feeling around it is, it's one thing to go and build a garage, and I think we talked about this with the other example that's here that's in the top right, that it's one thing to install a garage that's got the same finish as in other things of a home. It's another thing to talk about wrapping a shipping container with T1 siding or something like that and put some sort of roof on. Because if you go to the next slide, that's what I envision these things are gonna end up looking like, if we start taking metal containers and just saying we're gonna put stuff on them. So I mean, I just, I can't even imagine how you would, how you would go about getting the materials to stick to it and to do it and make it look like something that's a garage or, you know, a detached garage or something.
There's not that much lipstick.
That was actually the analogy I was trying to avoid using. So I just, to me, that's just the nonstarter. Like, that example is a good example of what we don't want, and we actually, by having, and if you could go back to that slide, I would totally agree with the header of that slide, which is, this is the things to avoid. And even the one that we talked about that has a pitched roof and everything else on the previous slide, that that's something we don't want to see either. And that one kind of looked like it's got some siding, kind of looks like a garage, but it's still too close, too tall to be next to somebody else's house.
Let's ask the city manager to comment.
Cyrus?
Yes, Ms. Garner brought this to my attention today. I think since that 30-day notice was given, and since this is not complying with our codes, we are going to follow through with our zoning code and requirements and have the property owner to remove this, and whatever action that's needed, we will do.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, as we're looking at applying the code in the future, these are the types of things that we don't even want to encourage. I mean, if somebody's gonna put something like there and wrap it, just go build something that looks like it's supposed to be there, and not, not do this, I think, I think is the feedback I would give. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment about that, but, and hopefully we get this code in place soon, and we can figure out how many of these issues we have, because I think, Erin, you actually said it to me earlier today, that every time we talk about this issue, we find another one. There's someone else that this just happened to. So hopefully, as this gets codified and code can actually maybe be a little bit more proactive in finding these eyesores, and it's not just, you know, the neighbor that's gotta come down to say, this is, this is the situation I've been put through. Because I feel for the owner that, you know, and we had another young couple in here a couple months ago pointing out about the one that's on the top right there, that, you know, they woke up one day and they had a 15-foot structure, you know, glaring over their kitchen. So, Bob, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just, I agree with what the city manager said, that it needs to be removed. There's nothing, it's a cargo barge, and it doesn't fit into the residential area. It's something that the owner wanted to do, and I'm glad that they have an imagination, but your imagination won't get rid of that, and it doesn't fit into the residential area. There are other things that we're gonna be looking at in the future. As you said, there are some things we aren't looking at tonight. It was part of the PowerPoint presentation just now. Some things we'll be talking about in the future, but right now, we're talking about this one, and I don't want anyone to think that this is okay for them to go ahead and do this because this one person did. It doesn't fit. It's not something that will work.
And more concerning is, it's there now, and then how many people want to put these in their yard and then come figure out how to work with us to wrap it later, and does that take two years of it sitting there? So, we have another speaker card?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one quick comment.
Quickly.
Just on this, I think for the benefit of the public, it is important that, it's common when code enforcement finds situations where there is what appears to be an honest and minor mistake, sometimes to give folks the opportunity to come in, to talk about it, to see if they can get a permit from the city to fix a problem and to come in compliance with the city's laws. And I think we do do that in a variety of circumstances where it looks like the errors are accidental or minor, and where they won't have a potentially really significant impact on the neighbors if we give that time. And I agree with the city manager's judgment and the community's comments that that's not the case here, and we don't have to give that opportunity in all circumstances, but I do think that it's important, you know, where we can, we try to work with communities and neighbors to give folks the opportunity to come into compliance with the city's laws as, when possible.
Thank you. Okay, the comment card?
I have another speaker card from Angel Ball.
Good evening. My name is Angel Ball. I'm a resident of Rancho Cordova, and I am here to thank Erin, Pam, and June for them listening to myself and the volunteers and neighborhood services and all of our comments that we had on the egg ordinance and the beekeeping and the structures, et cetera, and it's just real important to us that our voices are heard, and I want you to know that these three people did so. And I actually like the 485-page document that Erin has presented. 485 pages, so I appreciate, and of course, I appreciate all of you, and that was super, what just took place with that resident, and that's why I'm so proud to have you as my counsel and to live in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speaker cards for this item.
Okay. Bob?
Just wanted to say congratulations on being able to read the 485- Just wanted to say congratulations on being able to read the 485 pages. That was...
For sure.
Well, of cour-, and we, of course, read all of those pages.
So we're probably ready for a motion?
So let me go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay.
And I'll entertain a motion.
Adam, can I do both titles with one motion?
Yes, you can. And please, if you would, include with the corrections in the errata sheet and the one that you were kind enough to read into the record.
Okay. Then I will find that the prior environmental documentation is adequate and appropriate and move that we approve amending Title 8 and Title 23 and that we include the errata sheet dated 4/17/2017, including the small change in the very last paragraph on page 2.
Oh, second.
So a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Baron Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
For the record, Councilmembers Skoklin and Sandor are absent.
Thank you. And as a reminder, Item 15.2 has been continued. So we'll move on to regular calendar items. Item 16.1, recommendations on the fiscal year 2017-2018 Community Enhancement Fund Applications Received and Introduced City Department and Council Led Initiatives. And as Stacy makes her way with the double Bible of Measure H fund requests, we will get started. Be sure to lift with your legs.
Right.
Did you see the binder she's got?
I'm Stacy Delaney and I'm the Community Enhancement Analyst. And this evening, we will be going over the review committee's recommendations on the fiscal year 2017-18 Community Enhancement Fund Grant Applications. In addition to that, we will also be introducing the recommendations made by the individual city departments on their own initiatives.
Wave around some people.
We'll give you a sec to get the lights back on.
Make enough. We didn't move enough.
I can continue.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll see.
All right.
And then we will ask you for your individual contributions. If there's any specific items that you would like to add to the list so that the full council can consider them. And then lastly, we'll go over the next steps through the month of May, which will conclude the work sessions and the regular city council meetings on this topic. So during the application period, we actually received 69 grant applications that totaled originally $4.7 million. We had one applicant withdraw their application. And then we had a couple of applications that were modified. So the new total that we're looking at is $4.2 million for the 68 applications that were submitted. You'll see on the left, those were the categories that we estimated to award grant applications. And so council had expected to award about $952,000 to arts, culture, history, entertainment, and sports, about $476,000 in education programs, and about $300,000 in others. So you'll see in the middle column, that's the total value of the applications that we received by category. And then the column on the right shows what the recommendations are. So the overall committee had recommended not to move forward $300,000 in the arts, culture, history, entertainment, and sports category, about $515,000 in education, and about $1.1 million in the other projects. I'm going to briefly describe kind of the review process that we used. Initially, there was a group of five individuals that read every application submitted and all the supplemental materials that went along with that. We initially decided whether or not we felt the applications met the general requirements or not. And then we also then began the prioritization method to see whether or not we felt they were leveraging existing partnerships or funding, whether they were, had the capacity to carry out the program, what the return on investment was, et cetera. And then once that process completed, we then went and looked to see if it was an education-related project. Did they have the support of the superintendent in which the project would take place? So that was another way that we looked at the programs. And then we had a separate review committee specifically look at the education items, since there were so many, and then make an overall recommendation on which programs we felt were best suited to move forward for council consideration. So when we went through that process, we eliminated 27 projects or did not recommend them for further council consideration. And we moved forward 41 that we would like council to consider during the May 15 meeting. All those materials were included in the agenda packet. And I know Councilmember David Sandor isn't here, but he did share with staff some items that he would like council to consider. And I'm going to go ahead and share those numbers with you. That way, if you have any thoughts regarding those, I can at least share the numbers with you. So the application numbers, he was interested in council considering our application number 25, which is the Crocker Art Museum's Artist-to-Go Program. Application number 37, which is the CL3 program at Cordova High School.
Say that number again, please.
The first one is 25.
Got that.
The second is 37.
Okay.
The third is 42, which is the weight room equipment at Cordova High School. The next one is number 44, which is the Fourth of July Run for 2018. Then he has number 52, which is the Visual Arts Program. And then he also has number 55, which is the Bark and Saba Program. And then I would also just like to add one. There was one program in which the applicant had sent additional information last week so that we could make another, we actually looked at the program again to see if it did indeed meet our criteria. That was number 16, which is the Ankar Program. So we had our city attorney's office look at that one again. And they felt that two components in the original application could be considered, that they did not pose a problem with our grant restrictions, that it did not actually promote a specific religion. So there were two components in their overall application that could be considered if you wanted to do so.
Do you want to talk about which of those components they are?
Yes, just one second, please. The first is the Festival of Color. So after careful consideration, they felt it was more multicultural in nature and did not promote a specific religion. And then the other one, I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce this correctly, but the Basant Pachami, which is a multicultural event as well.
And I would just add, I, I appreciate Stacy correctly stating the standard here. We would and will continue to apply that standard equally to all types of events that promote a particular religion, regardless of the religion. But we did, we are comfortable with the distinction she, she just made here and we think it's legally required.
That's always a tough standard in doing charitable giving because you have great faith-based organizations that are also doing good things for the community if we can find ways to make it fit.
And I, I, I do think that that's right. And that's why we will try to, you know, slice and dice and give applicants the opportunity to do culture, but not religion, if you will, as we did in this case.
Okay.
At this time, I'm not sure if you have any specific request, questions or comments regarding the recommendations that the committees made. I do know there's individuals in the audience that would like to make public comment.
Yeah, let's go ahead and take public comment now and then we can weigh into these.
Perfect. I have 10 cards for speaker public comment. First is from John Rango. Following Mr. Rango is Mary Nessel.
So just, I, I just want to remind everybody that, just before you start. So with 10 public commentators, that's usually on the high end for us. To be respectful of everybody's time, you don't have to take all three minutes. And at a certain point, you want to hear from us. And if we have questions for you, we may be calling you back up. So don't feel like you're blowing it all here and that's the only time you get it. But, but with that, just a reminder, it's up to three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is John Rango with the Boys and Girls Club. We had our application 63 in the education field for a feasibility study. And in the comments was, after it had not been selected, was council direction needed to determine if a subsequent study should be undertaken. Prior to our program beginning, we had conducted a, a pre-development study, which was really the Boys and Girls Club identifying existing resources in Rancho Cordova. I know when we had started our program, we wanted to be very intentional in making sure that we were addressing the largest need, which led us to our current program at Cordova High, as well as being with elementary school, youth for summer camps. What we were looking for in this proposal was a feasibility study really to move forward and see potentially what we could look for in terms of community resources, funding, kind of next steps for, for Boys and Girls Club. If we were, if council was interested in potentially looking at a, 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 a community, community center that could be Boys and Girls Club in addition to other existing resources and identifying some of those resources, both community partnerships as well as financial resources in the community as well. And the partnership would be with Lester Consulting, who we've, we've done work with in the past. So I'll keep it brief and take questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Mary Nessel. Following Ms. Nessel is Robin Moehr.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I hadn't intended to speak in relation to this agenda item, but somehow I got stuck to the agenda item. It is Measure H related. And I want to go back to before we voted in Measure H. And I've talked about this once before to you all. My neighborhood, which is Cordova Meadows, was supposed to have the streets paved. Then we had neighborhood meetings about Measure H. We were told that if we voted it in, the city council had a good budget, but Measure H funds would help expedite things like getting city streets repaved. And I thought that was great and I promoted Measure H. Well, since we voted it in, the streets haven't, in my neighborhood, still haven't been repaved. Just so happens that coincidentally, they were on tonight's agenda to finally get done. But they're not all getting done. Some of them are being excluded because there's not enough money. When I asked Albert Stricker, what about Measure H funds so that we can do the whole neighborhood? He said, well, we have $500,000 of Measure H funds being used on this project. But still, there's not enough money to do the entire neighborhood, which just strikes me as very odd. So I'm begging you to reconsider how the Measure H funds are being used. I think they should, we should draw way back on the fact that they're being dispersed the way they are until we get things like city streets, all the city streets repaved. It, paving our city streets would go a long way towards item number one and number two of the city's goals as far as making our city be more attractive. And we're constantly fighting a bad reputation from when we were Sacramento County. Making this city visually attractive is going to go a long way towards helping those goals, more so than a lot of the little things that the money is being used for. I don't begrudge the, the various outfits that are getting the money for the various projects. They're all very worthwhile. But I think first things first is take care of the basics, the fundamentals of taking care of our city streets. And there may be other projects like street signals or paving, sidewalk paving or crosswalk painting, something like that. I, I like the council and the city staff to take a look at what are some of the basics in our city that our budget isn't covering, that we should be using Measure H funds for, before we start using Measure H funds for all the little things that it's been going out for. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Robin Moehr. And following Robin is Perry Manst.
Hi, I want to thank the mayor and the council members for taking my request to speak tonight. I applied for a visual arts, public art mural to be installed at the Nimbus Fish Hatchery. I did a lot of research on it, only to find out that it is just over the border because it's across the freeway. So I know that the city does partner with the county with many projects that they find are beneficial to the city of Rancho Cordova. There are tens of thousands of residents, visitors, and schoolchildren that utilize the fish hatchery for not just entertainment, but for educational purposes. And while the visitor center inside is very interactive and beautiful and inviting, the building itself is a metal shed. And there's nothing visually outside on the visitor center itself that kind of attracts people to even see that the building is there. And I wa, I worked with Laura Darth there at the visitor center to ask her about a public art piece there. I do glass stained mosaic art and something that would be bold and beautiful on the exterior of that building that people could see as they're coming from the parking lot, from the bike trails, and you can even visually see it for a small little bit when you drive down Hazel Avenue. I know the city is promoting public art much more than they have in the past and I have been very grateful for that. But I would like you to reconsider the fact that there are economic benefits of investing in public art, even if it is just across the border, because it does affect Rancho Cordova proper in many ways. And so I would just like to ask if you could reconsider the proposal to not fund it. My original funding, I am actually willing to take a hit in a sense and be negotiable with the amount of funding. I am willing to donate my labor if my materials could be provided so that we can actually see this project go forward. I do have copies of my grant application if you want to visually look at my...
We have them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one suggestion for you. As the newest member of the American River Conservancy, maybe looking in some other resources that don't tie it to, because the, these funds, when they were, when they were adopted and passed by voters, said specifically that the money all will stay in Rancho Cordova. So we've turned down multiple proposals that are afoot outside of the city or for schools that are just outside of the city. So I don't think there's a lot of leeway there, but there may be other resources, maybe even at the state level, that would address a state facility like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Perry Manst. Following Perry is Melody Granger, Mayor.
It's been a while, huh? Hi Cyrus, how you doing? Robert and Linda. I've been at Cordova for you know how, a long time and over almost 20 years. And I've seen a lot of things happen, come and go. And as far as the CL3 program is involved, you know that I'm involved with Conrad and we, we very seldom see each other with, without the other. However, in 20 years, we've never let you down. And the CL3 is just under, under construction. And I've been through probably over 20, 20 assistant principals, three principals, a myriad of different counselors. And the eradication of programs at Cordova has been public safety academies, auto repair maintenance, woodworking, metal fabrication, sheriff's academy, and they just, they have just gone awayside. They never, you never go through and see the whole thing through and see it work. Once again, I remind you, Conrad and I have never let you down almost 20 years. I remind you of, of a little group called the Interact Club, which you're very familiar with. When we first started, there was three people and we took it over. And now you've given those, that group of people, multiple awards for helping you out. You know about the Interact Club also. What's products, what's produced out of that group has been doctors, lawyers, engineers, and they're still going to college. Out of that group, they started with three and now we're starting with the CL3. And now we need your funds to help you look good at Cordova High School again. Thank you.
My next speaker is Melody Granger, Mayor. Following Melody is Conrad, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to encourage all of you to reconsider the staff recommendation for the CL3 program. I think that... I think that I have a somewhat unique perspective, although probably somewhat biased since I am married to Conrad, but I think I do a pretty good job of evaluating things on face value. And I've gotten to see the program, not only from his viewpoint of the interactions with the kids at the high school, but also the impact that it's had on our community, with the Cordova Community Council, the young men and women who participate, and the mentors at Cordova High Program have really become, you know, our go-to group for all of our community events. At the end of the events, they show up after all the fun is over, and they're there to do all the cleanup, all the hard work, to get in those community service hours and really learn what it means to give back to your community. I've also had the opportunity to see a plethora of young individuals come through, you know, at our home, and at school functions, and the mock functions as well, just seeing a very diverse range of individuals, and the impact that the program is having on those students. We provided last week a random sampling of a third of the participants and their academic results, and if you look at it, a lot of it's not real impressive. These are the underperforming students that we're targeting, but of those, of the sampling that we provided, eighty percent of those students had increased either their percentage or their grade overall in their classes. And so that's a significant increase, I believe. There's also been an increase in attendance. We've had a few challenges getting data, and I think that there's been a lot of learning lessons this year on how to go about gathering that information. But there's one young man who last year had a hundred and eleven absences, and this year he has six, solely because of his involvement in the mock program. There's another young man who his, his brother was killed this past year, gang affiliations, and this young man could have gone that same route as his older brother, but he chose not to a couple of years ago because of his involvement in the informal program that was in place, and now because it's formalized, he's been able to stay on track. And one of his brothers, who's two years younger, that was kind of going off track, is now coming back into, you know, a more positive path. So there's things like that, that you can't quantify, that this program has impacted. So I encourage all of you to reconsider the request that's been submitted. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Conrad Mayer. Following Mr. Mayer is Charles Ellington.
Don't know quite where to start after that.
Well, I can tell you, we appreciate your letter.
Thank you.
With the, and the information that you did provide, that was really super.
Thank you. Well, I am here, going to try to be strong, because my wife took the emotions piece from me, to do just that, ask for reconsideration. This program has been something unique, something developed by the people that live here, for the people that live here, on a number of different levels. I want to thank Mayor David, I mean, Councilmember Sander, for his thoughts and his desire to have this reconsidered without his being here. That means a lot to me, because David and I have been working in the educational, on the educational piece for some time now, and educational opportunities as well. For me, this is sort of a program that is very similar to some of the other outstanding programs that we've been recognized for. Imagine that organization fifty years ago, where a small group of people, you know, wanted to get together and form an organization so that issues in our city could be heard, better known as the Cordova Community Council, and look where we're at. How about a young man who was a young sheriff for the SAC County that saw a problem within our city and our young African-American males, and decided to form a program called the OK Program that is now nationally recognized and duplicated on so many levels? And I want to take a step back and share that our Cordova Community Council is also being duplicated by a neighboring city. I see this program...
And a Cordova grad.
Yes. Smart guy, right? So I don't want to let, and I'm here, I was told I need to fight for this program. I hope that I have the trust in you guys to know that, you know, this is something that should be moved forward. This is definitely beneficial to our community. And as my wife has said, and, you know, fellow friend, colleague, good, used to be neighbor, mentioned that we've never let you down. This is something unique, and I think it takes more than the six months that we've actually been funded, although we've been, you know, doing this for a number of years now. Just the last six months, we've had the assistance and funding of the city, and with school-type stuff, you really need to be planning right now for the, for next year. And I don't think we had that assured, that assurance, until we saw funds.
Mr. Mayer, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, let's keep doing unique programs and being recognized for them, and not let them go to the wayside. So thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Charles Ellington. Following Mr. Ellington is Jeet Potter.
So I was actually, to add on to what Conrad said, I was actually a member of the OK Program when it was still taking place in Rancho Cordova. And just the impact that it had on my life, and just wanting to make me come back and give to the community, when I saw that in this program, it just really made me want to join, and the broadening of my horizons that I've got to experience in working within the city, and talk to the kids on Saturdays. I mean, last Saturday, we had a meeting, and we were talking about how our different skills and what we had, and just one person mentioning that they needed math tutoring. It started a domino effect, and like three or four other kids, they started to volunteer for it, you know, bring that to our attention. And I think that the program really excels in providing a comfortable environment where the kids and their peers can really share their experiences and also be educational at the same time. And one thing that they mentioned was that they were bored, and they wanted constructive options that were also educational, and I think that our program really provides that. So I just really would hate to see the program after getting funded in November, and then being considered for cuts before the school year even ended. I would hate to see that, and it's just, you know, we've been doing this for four years, but just this last year, we really started going, so that's all I have to say.
My next speaker is Jeet Potter. Following Jeet is Sarah Weimer.
My name is Jeet, and I am representing a local nonprofit organization, Ankur. I'm here basically, you know, with a request to reconsider the staff recommendation, to relook our application. Before I begin, I must say that, you know, this is the first time we approached, you know, any sort of fund request from any organization, so we are not that much familiar. And having said that, I don't think we did a that great a job when we submitted our grant application. But thanks to the analyst, you know, Ms. Delany, that we had the opportunity to clarify, you know, when, you know, so when we asked for clarification, when we realized that our application was initially not considered. Having said that, the document that I've just shared in front of you is basically a revised version of our funding request. So briefly, I'll tell you, our organization, Ankur, is almost a ten-year-old organization. It's one of the most, foremost nonprofit organizations in the local Sacramento area. We primarily promote, you know, Southeast Asian culture through various community service and social cultural events. We also run our own school, which imparts language learning program to all the kids. And apart from the language learning, we teach music arts, which includes, you know, drawing, sketching, and we also prepare the kids for drama and dances. As I stated, we have been providing this service for almost ten years now. At the same time, we also, you know, partner with some other nonprofit organizations like KVIE, or American River, you know, Foundation. Our next event is a community service, which is basically Clean the Trail on May. And we want to reiterate, because there was a question raised, that, you know, we never promote any sort of religious belief, even though, you know, we are a faith-based organization, you know, we all have our own faiths, but none of our events is to promote any of our religious belief. And having said that, we are requesting, you know, you all to relook our application, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
So we won't take questions immediately from any of the public commenters, but you may be called back up. Thank you.
My next speaker is Sarah Weimer. Following Ms. Weimer is Eric Eklund.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Sarah Weimer. I'm here on behalf of the Parent Life Organization nonprofit program that operates currently in our community in Rancho Cordova. I'm here to ask for further council consideration for the Parent Life program that's currently working in Rancho Cordova. The mission of Parent Life is to reach expectant and parenting teens, and to come along beside them in a mentoring relationship with trained adults, and equip them to be able to attain life skills needed to be able to succeed in life, and improve their chances of graduating from high school and continuing their education, which is imperative for future success for them. The funding committee had declined our application for two reasons. One is that our organization currently operates at Walnutwood High School and mentors teens there, and it's currently operating there, as well as at a facility in Rancho Cordova, without CEF funding. However, it's only operating based on the hearts of volunteers, who have a heart for these teens and want to see them succeed. And without the, without funding, really, the volunteering is not sustainable to carry this program, and to continue to have these teens mentored, and to have a solid, long-lasting relationship with these adults who care deeply about them and their success, and their children, and ability to succeed. So because it's not sustainable, even though it currently is operating, that's why we submitted a grant application for CEF funding. The second reason that it was not recommended for funding was that the program is not necessarily based on academic achievement. And while that is true, that we don't teach them algebraic equations or anything like that, what we are teaching is life skills, and the life skills have been documented and proven statistically to really increase their chances of finishing their education and going on even to college, something that many of them would never have the opportunity to do. And the life skills training, which turns into completion of academic education, really breaks that cycle of poverty that so many of these teen parents find themselves in the midst of. We do have a letter of support from the principal of Adelanta High School, where Parent Life currently operates, showing their, expressing her support of the organization and the program. And while Parent Life is relatively new to Rancho Cordova, it has proven to be successful in Southern California and Central California, and we have seen a direct correlation of teen parents who are in the Parent Life program, and their rates of graduations from high school versus teen parents who are not within the program. So we do use a specific curriculum for Parent Life, and again, it's a life skills program, but it does translate into academic achievement as well. And we are certainly negotiable. We had requested a grant for a five-year program to get the program really up and running, and to be able to hire someone to staff that. And we are certainly open to having reduced funding, or reduced a grant period, perhaps one or two years, but we...
Weimer, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment?
Yes, I would just greatly appreciate the further consideration of our application. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, can I ask a quick question about this one to you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
The advocate just stated that she had a letter of support from the principal. I also see on here that, under endorsements, it says yes from Volts-Cordova. Is that the principal, or the superintendent signed?
The superintendent did endorse the project, meaning she didn't say, "No, it couldn't happen." It just wasn't recommended as highly as some of the other programs.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I know we had talked about the superintendents were signed off on, but she was referencing...
I believe the principal she's referencing wasn't from Walnutwood High School. It was a different high school.
Oh, okay.
I'm Eric Eklund, Assistant Principal at Cordova High School, and I'm here tonight just for the staff's reconsideration on the weight room project that was submitted. We believe that enhancement of the weight room not only benefit our boys and girls athletic teams, but also increase our student engagement and participation in our regular PE classes. We also believe that it could be a top-notch facility, just as some of the neighboring schools have, and I'm here to answer any questions. I'll keep this short. Thank you.
Mr. Mayer, I have no more speaker cards.
All right, okay, thank you. So there's a few different ways we could go about this tonight. My suggestion would be that we start with the programs that are not recommended for funding, to see if there's any that we want to discuss. Obviously, we had some that Councilmember Sander has already expressed an interest in having more information to discuss. So we could go down the list, and if there's not an interest to discuss, then we know that we can just move on. Would you like to do that?
Okay. I would have some, I would have some comments.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a couple on the list that David gave you, that I agree with, and then a couple to add for consideration. So I do agree with twenty-five, the Art to Go project, and with thirty-seven, CL three. I also agree with item fifty-two, the visual arts, although since this is a program that isn't really, there's not really anything to kickstart until we adopt this ordinance, it strikes me that perhaps negotiating the funding, or negotiating a timeframe or something like that, might be appropriate. I'm not sure, but...
Right, that item is supposed to go to council in the fall?
Yeah, see, so, but definitely for consideration. Item fifty-two, the bicycle stuff from Bark and Saba.
You mean fifty-five?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Right, fifty-five. It says something about a hundred and twenty-five community events, and that's an awful lot, like one every day, or every other day, sort of. So it seems to me that we want to ensure that, if we decide to fund this, we want to ensure that everything where they provide valet parking is in Rancho Cordova.
Correct. Under the current agreement that we have with them, I believe they have between eighteen to twenty-four events to do, so that's a huge jump in one year.
See, so there just aren't a hundred and twenty-five events around here. I mean, the community council's very busy, but they're not that busy.
Just to clarify, because what I'm looking at in the summary says twenty-four to thirty community events. Are we talking about the same thing?
What's the one hundred and twenty-five?
I don't, and again, I'm looking at the summary. I didn't, I didn't bring my binder tonight.
Hang on a minute.
So...
They do have, I would say, probably up to twenty-four events planned this fiscal year. The committee's concern was that because the majority of their events won't happen until at least April or May, we have no way of saying whether or not those events were successful.
This is kind of like where the school activities are caught. They're not at the end of the school year yet, but they're not at, this, these two groups are not at the end of their funded year yet.
Correct. They have until June, but the only thing we can go off of right now is, yes, they have produced a schedule of events that they would like to do. We just don't know what the results of those events will be.
And now, you know, and again, I don't have the full proposal, but it's twenty-four to thirty community events. Maybe they're adding the other ones, so the social rides and the bike maintenance classes all together?
Well...
To get somewhere around a hundred?
No, actually, no, and I don't know where, I don't know where I got a hundred and twenty-five. And I don't know where I got 125, but if you read the 50 Carter TMA newsletter, they are doing an awful lot of social rides. They've probably got six planned that just came out in the newsletter today.
Correct.
And several of those involve bike maintenance classes also. And they actually tried to do, it had to get canceled, and I don't know whether it got rescheduled or not, but they were going to do one here. And Albert probably knows what happened to that one, but it's-
They do have four bikes repair classes scheduled. There's six to eight social bike rides, and then there was a number of bike valet services between August, May, and June, or April, May, and June.
Yeah, so, at any rate, but that's definitely something worth considering. In addition, your item 16, the two events that you're proposing could be funded legally by San Pachami and Holly?
Yes.
So I would support those two. And then the final one would be item 65 for the Moose. I realize that the Moose has not completed. This is like the school things, unless we were just saying about Bark. They have not completed their initial project because they are doing this with their own labor. And so I would propose that we only fund a couple of the things that they want to add. They do need additional fencing, and they do need to replace the doors and windows. This is very similar to the Grange, needing to upgrade the quality of the building. And they need to upgrade the front entrance. And so negotiating a lesser amount that would hopefully do some of that, especially like the fencing, which they could do while they're doing the fencing for the rest of the fencing. But those would be the ones that I would support considering.
Okay. Bob?
And I did have questions on some of the ones that are already recommended.
Yeah, let's do that after that.
Let's do that later.
Yeah. Bob, any on the not recommended, then you can repeat one.
Actually, just two. It's the 16, and then I agree with Linda on the Moose Lodge with the, really important to have fencing in the doors and windows like that. That's really important, I think, to have those things safe. And a lot of them have been there a lot longer than the safety would have been. So they need to be done, just like the Grange Hall does.
Okay. So let me, I guess, let me start with the Moose Lodge. For the amount and what they're trying to do, like, that's rivaling the grants that we're going to give to Folsom Lake College this year. I just, I don't know how we take a bite at that, but I'm wondering if we can explore, I know we have the economic development funds and capital funds to do loans and things like that. And maybe there's a way in working with a community financial institution or somebody else, because as a nonprofit, and it being what I believe would be considered a community facility, we might be able to partner with somebody to do a loan that we can cover the interest or cover some of the loan loss reserve and get somebody that can come in and actually invest that much capital to allow them, because, I mean, they have revenue. I mean, and I know that, we've talked to them before, but, you know, they have dues-paying members, and maybe they just need to reallocate some of it to a payment every month to cover the deferred maintenance that they haven't gotten to. But I, personally, I don't know how we keep that one alive at that dollar amount. I just, I don't see us being able to pick it off comparatively, unless we kick it to, you know, the legacy projects and talk about everything, you know, building a brand-new one or something like that at some point. But I don't want to decline it today. I'd like staff to probably maybe work with economic development to see if there's not a better, a better way for us to assist in them getting the capital that they need for Let's see. I think I would agree. So the Crocker Art Museum one, that's, is that the mobile?
It's not the ArtArc.
It's not the Arc.
But this is the group that's at Sunrise right now. The Friday Memo had a whole schedule of what they were going to do in the different classes at Sunrise.
So there's three different programs that were all proposed, very similar in nature. One is called the Meet the Masters program. One was called the ArtArc, and one is called Artist to Go. So we collectively just ranked the other two higher. So it was just a matter of, did we really need three programs that were all very similar in nature, all supporting the same grade levels, all performing art-related education? So that was why we had recommended not to, or put it on the not recommended list.
Okay.
Well, since we're familiar with the ArtArc, then we probably really need to attend one of those Arts to Go programs at Sunrise so that we can see what the differences are. So we really know.
Plus, there's the Meet the Masters, which is also currently funded.
Okay.
So there's three options.
Okay.
So maybe keep this one-
We need to go play with the little kids.
To talk about it a little bit more, but I think hearing from the Crocker and maybe the school district about this one versus that one, I agree. I don't think we need to be funding three programs from the same place for relatively the same thing.
Speaking to the school superintendent, this one was ranked third among the three.
Okay. For Folsom, Cordova?
Correct.
Okay.
But this Crocker Art Museum Artist to Go program, I believe, was submitted just specifically for Folsom, Cordova Unified School District.
And we should try to avoid that in the future, when we pick, especially these types of things where with a little bit of conversation, we can figure out how this fits into all schools.
Right. ArtArc does visit all school districts. That was also why that one was ranked higher.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm fine with leaving this here for now and having some more discussions, but I would probably tend towards agreeing not to recommend it for funding. I'd like to continue to talk about 37, so the CL3. I think the data that we were given, I'll be honest with you, I didn't read it because I think some of it had some privacy issues, and so I don't need individual students' grades. Give me what they were, what they are, how many students, attendance, and things like that in an aggregate, and I'd be happy to review it. I think at the time that the committee looked, they didn't have a lot of that data. Let's at least get it. And I think, like a lot of these, like Linda said, we're in a point where, you know, we worked out an agreement by mid-fall to, you know, early winter, and so we're a handful of months into them spending the money. So to think that we're already going to have data is, and the other thing, too, to think about when it comes to comparing this to, like, other established after-school programs, even though I know this has been around for a while, to compare it to other things that the superintendent may have been running for 10 years and they just want to scale it up with some more, you know, we also want to find innovative approaches to education or anything that we're doing. So I'd like to see that one move forward, at least for now.
Is that number 37?
37.
Done, okay.
Yeah. And while I was a student athlete, and I think, you know, yes, students need great weight equipment and other things like that, we haven't even finished paying for the program that we're paying for right now with the football team. So I'm going to just be upfront that I don't think this year is the year to come back for additional funding when we're talking over six figures this year in addition, right? Just for the football helmet program?
In fiscal year 17, 18, I believe they get roughly 90 or 95 more thousand.
And this would be on top of that.
This would be on top of that, yes.
And again, that's just me, and I don't know if we want to discuss it, because so far, I've only heard that David wanted to move that one forward. I don't, I think this year, the nearly $100,000 is sufficient, and then we can come back and look at it. What I will say is, to the vice principal, when you propose this, if you propose this in the future, don't put down that it's for the football team, because the first thing I thought about was how much money we're already giving them. And you just reminded me when you were up here that the weight room's used by everybody. So make sure that's reflected next year.
You know, I don't believe that was in the original proposal.
Okay. Yeah, that's the title of it.
Yeah, and that's, I want to clarify, it wasn't. It is for everybody.
Okay. And I appreciate that. But again, even if we look at the funding we've given to sports-
Yeah.
-has been quite a bit for the school. And so I think, I think let's finish the funding, the multi-year funding, and the only multi-year funding that we put in to Measure H on that, and then I think we could revisit something in the future.
So let's just add for the record that the vice principal was clarifying that it's definitely for the community.
Right. It was for all sports, which I think is helpful to think about here, but yeah, it wasn't the way it was portrayed in here, I think. But either way, there's still a very significant investment that we're making in sports at that high school. So I don't hear anyone else disagreeing with me, so I think it sounded to me like-
No, we're fine.
-David was the only one. So I think that one can actually probably. Do we want to talk about the 4th of July one? Because again, David was the only one that I heard say that, so the 4th of July fun run. Was there anybody else that wanted to see that move forward? Okay.
I think David knows a lot more about it than I do, and right now, I'm just, no.
Yeah. Okay, so then that one wouldn't move forward based on the number of votes here. I'm fine with moving the Bark-Saba one forward to get more information, because I think we're talking about a lot of different numbers, and I think we do want to support biking and whatnot in our community, but yeah, I would need to hear more. I already talked about the Moose Lodge, so I-
Okay, so I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I want to ask a question. In terms of process, this is strictly the applications from the community.
That is correct.
And there is a point at which staff will bring back dare requests for-
You'll get that tonight as well.
We are getting that tonight. Okay. So I'd love to get more information from Albert about paving in Cordova Meadows.
That is one of the items he has recommended on his list.
Great.
So we will get to that.
Great, thank you.
I think the only other one on here that's David and Linda at the moment is the visual arts one. Although, Linda, were you suggesting to move it forward or to wait until we had the formation of the visual arts committee?
No, I was suggesting that Stacy would talk with the proponent about it, because if you'll notice, it really is designed to help, probably implement is the best word, to help implement the ordinance that is coming back to us, but we're not going to see that ordinance until October.
No, I know.
So the question is, is that amount of money accurate, given the fact that activities would not start until October? So just a conversation with the applicant.
Would you like me to find out what the revised amount would be based upon a program starting later in the year?
Well, I don't, I think to Linda's point, until we know what their mission is and what they're going to be doing and what their budget looks like and who's going to do it, is it appropriate to talk about money yet?
Okay, but that might be in the giant binder.
Is the funding for this to start the formation of the organization?
Pretty much. No. I'll flip to it.
So it's a study in?
Item 52.
Yeah, 52. Let's just do this. I'll agree that we should continue to talk about it at the next meeting, but yeah, let's flesh that one out a little bit more as far as, because it looks like it's a study for the arts groups and to build capacity. So maybe this is covering the costs of creating the organization?
Sort of.
Which makes me nervous, but-
I think it's worth continuing also, because it sounds like it would be something that could do a lot more, but I think with Stacy looking right now for more information, then I'd like to have that more information also. So let's continue that.
Okay. So if I'm got this right, I just want to, I'm going to reiterate here. So on the not recommended list, the ones that would still move forward to the next hearing would be 16, so the Ankur Arts Cultural History and Language Program; 25, the Folsom, Cordova Crocker Art Museum Artist to Go program; 37, the CL3 Mentors at Cordova High Program; 52, the Visual Arts Skills and Capacity Building; 55, the Bark and Saba program;
Yeah.
And the Moose Lodge.
Number 65, yes.
65, I'm sorry, 65.
Yeah.
The rest would be declined.
Correct.
Okay? Are we all comfortable with that?
Would you like to make a motion to?
Sure.
Can we do that all, you want to do that all now? You want to do them separately, or?
What was that one before the Moose?
55, the bicycle-
Bark and Saba.
Oh, okay.
And Saba one?
Yeah.
Bicycle Advocates Rancho Cordova and Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates. So do you want to hash this up into multiple votes?
These items will come back to you for formal approval, but it doesn't hurt to formalize that at this point.
Okay, so I will-
To me, actually, to me, this seems like this is staff recommendation to write it up for a final vote.
No, I will move, I will move that we retain those numbers listed, 16, 25, 37, 52, 55, and 65 on the recommended and need more information list.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
And for the record, councilmembers Schockland and Sander are absent.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the recommended for council consideration and the amounts that are here, too. So I think it's, let's talk about, if there's ones on here that we're opposed to, I think that's the easiest thing to start with. Are there any on here that you, for now, don't want to?
I got to change.
Well, no, I'm, I'm-
I was here.
I'll let you have your time to do it. And so, Bob, you can start. If there are ones on here, which, I'm going to guess this will be a shorter number than other things, are there ones on here that we would not like to see funded, that we disagree with staff and should not be funded?
Actually, no. I don't have any. If you have some, then that's different, but I don't have any.
Linda?
I mean, I would like to be able to finance everything like everyone else would, but with ones that we do have, I would like to go forward with the ones that we have on council consideration for, that are recommended, so.
Okay, so item 26, Meet the Masters. So when they say Track A was purchased through a grant from the city, does that mean that they're actually purchasing this from the Crocker Museum?
So it is a series, I believe, like of a DVD series, and they purchase it so that it can be used in future years. And so it's not just like it's a one-time thing, and once it goes through the school, they never get to experience it again. So it's something they physically purchase.
That sounds very logical and very productive. So could we probably ask and see if that's really what's going on? Because that would be great.
It is.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, our intent tonight is not to go through the recommended list. That list, we feel, should be a discussion on May 15. And tonight, we're hoping that the next phase of the conversation is to introduce what we think are the department initiatives that would fall under the Community Enhancement Fund.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, I just want to reiterate, and I don't expect to, and then we can move on to staff. Is there anything in here that you disagree about that should not be funded that's on this list?
Well, I have questions about, probably about a half a dozen of them, so I should just ask Stacy.
Well, and I think, I think, like Stacy was saying, at the next meeting, we will delve into this list with more questions.
Yeah, but if I, if I get the answers to my questions, then I might nod or I might be opposed.
Yeah.
I'll find out.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds great. And so with that, we'll move into, oh, Mary, okay, I think we're going to talk paving for you as part of this, right? So the staff recommendations.
So the staff recommendations on the individual department-led initiatives were broken down based upon kind of their overarching category. So this represents the recommendation for the public safety component, and it would be specifically for the crime suppression unit. And the amount that was anticipated to be allocated was $1,020,000, and that's what's listed on this screen.
Are we supposed to have a piece of paper about this?
This is just us introducing it for the first time, and then also on May 15, this is when you'll formally either say yea or nay to it, but we just want to make sure you have a chance to hear them now. And then in economic development, they have a series of items that lead up to the $952,000. So the first is banner placemaking at $300,000. The second is a continuation of the business incentive and the revolving loan phone, or revolving loan program, and that's really a combination of two different programs. Then there's the sign and facade program, the neighborhood services abatement program, a shared housing which would be used for homeless, and then various community beautification projects that used to show up on the community engagement list before, such as the chain-link fence removal, drought-tolerant landscaping, and beautification projects.
Question, go ahead. Questions for staff?
How? How? How is the banner place making different, separate, or linked to our wayfinding signage so that it's all coordinated and not different departments doing different things that may not all be unified together? That sounds like a Maria question.
It is.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Marianne Easton in the Communications and Legislative Affairs Department. To answer your question about the banner place making and the wayfinding, so it is a coordinated effort with Public Works and the Communications Department. Our hope is to make sure that everything is working together, both the banner place making, the wayfinding, and any type of gateway and event signage.
Okay. I just want to know that it's all working together and not, and in harmony and not in individual efforts out there.
Yes, no, we are all working together.
I have a question about the banner, the signs like that. How about replacing? Is that part of the program also? Because we have some banners which, if you get up close enough, might be able to see what it is. There are some signs that have the city's insignia on it. And like on the tower there in the park, where we have the Christmas tree and all that sort of thing. But those signs are so faded that it's hard to really see them. I mean, they're beautiful if you can see them, if they have all the color and everything. But some of those things need to be replaced because they really are, like, we haven't paid any attention to them for a long time. And again, just less and less. I think they need to be replaced.
Thank you for those comments. Yes, we agree. And we're working on some replacements. Cyrus has asked us to start with the banners in front of City Hall. So we're working currently on a design that's vibrant, like our community, and that will replace the faded signs there. And then we're hoping if this is approved by council that there's enough dollars in here to not only create new banners and new areas where we would be place making, but also to replace some of the existing banners that are faded and are just past their time.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question on the property abatement program?
Yes.
What is that?
So currently, this is in place in fiscal years 16, 17 as well. So if there's commercial properties that need cleanup, such as there's been illegal dumping debris, et cetera, then we go through and clean up those properties.
And we don't charge the property owners for doing that kind of work? Or what, I mean, like, we don't have money for that already?
I would have to get the specifics from Carrie. I don't know if she's still here or not.
Oh, this is code, not-
Yes.
Not Public Works?
It's code-related.
Oh, okay.
No, this is under Economic Development. Neighborhood Services.
Oh, okay. Okay. I just want to make sure that that's not like a code enforcement officer. Because we've talked about the CBG funds and other things like that shouldn't be-
It's like MCE or some other companies that are hired to specifically go out and clean it.
This is like hiring IMS and other companies to-
This is not staff support.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just wanted to clarify, this is not for staff support. This is for contractors to do the work.
Okay. And this is for when there's like illegal dumping on a street? Because if it's stuff on someone's, in someone's parking lot that's a private business, they would be charged to pick that up. I know I do for my buildings when somebody dumped something.
So we can have them bring additional information so that it's clear exactly what type of properties and owners.
Yeah, I would say the property owner, if there's something needs to be cleaned up, then if we know who the property owner is.
Can't really own anything if you don't have a tax record. But I mean, that's the whole reason that we started putting code violations on tax rolls. So, I mean, I know I've emailed Albert when somebody's, you know, just gone dump stuff on a street that we don't know what it is and it's just in a field somewhere. But if it's, when I hear property abatement program, to me, that sounds like somebody dumped stuff on someone's property and that's now that person's problem. So, okay. There was just, that was my other question there. It is, Reed, you can just nod your head. Is the shared housing thing the thing that we talked about before, about getting a single-family house? And, okay. All right, I know what it is. Okay.
The next list is the Public Works and Infrastructure Projects that are recommended. And Albert, I don't know if you want to come up and answer any specific questions?
Any questions for Albert?
We're still reading.
Oh.
So talk a little bit about Meadows. I know that so often, we have done the major arterials in neighborhoods and not been able to do the side streets. We've seen it along McGregor, we've seen it in Lincoln Village. And yet, it's the little minor streets that are the ones that have not been touched since they were first laid down in 1953. And so it's great to be able to do the arterials. But at what point do we go back and pick up the small ones?
Good evening, Mayor Terry and Councilmembers. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And we're, this year, we're doing Phase 1 in Cordova Meadows. And in fact, on the consent calendar, council approved the construction contract for that. So that's going to construction shortly. And the scope of that includes La Loma, which is the main drag through the neighborhood. It also includes the, many of the smaller residential neighborhood roads. And we focused on the worst roads there first. So some of the most worn roads, including one of those being El Pavo, is included in that. This second phase that is included in the Measure H request would complete the remainder in that neighborhood and the East Tiffany neighborhood residential roads.
Let me ask a question about, we have $347,000 on Phase 2 Cordova Meadows rehab sidewalk upgrades. How much, and one of the things we told everyone is that this isn't something that is to take the place or to do something that the city hasn't already done. So we already have some money in the general money, general fund, planned to use to do the roads. This is something extra. This $347,000 is in addition to what we already had planned on doing, correct? I mean, we were already going to work on the roads. Every year, we have improving the roads and like that. So this is something in addition to that. So this is not just a replacement of something that, something else. Because we are redoing, I mean, adding more to what we already had planned on doing with a regular budget, correct?
That is correct. The majority of our funding is from various sources, including Measure A and gas tax. And we're continuing to use that funding. And this would be to augment those funds.
Okay, I just want to kind of clarify that because it, right now, it doesn't really show anything other than this. And we haven't really said anything other than this is what the Measure H money is going to be used for. It's supposed to be used, and I'm glad that it is still being used and will be for addition to things we already had planned on doing. So, you know, we didn't have to have Measure H to have a balanced budget. We already had that. Now we can do more in addition to the balanced budget. So that's what we're doing on this. And if we can speed things up on getting in the streets, like Linda was talking about, in the small streets in the neighborhood rather than the main drag through the neighborhood, you know?
No, it does say it has a remaining shortfall of 360,000. So where will that come from? Or what will be left out?
We have a number of options that we'll continue to pursue throughout the, as we work on the design and into next year. One of the most obvious would be the recent passage of SB 1. Should be able to, we hope, fill this gap.
So, which one was it? Could you restate, because I might have missed it. What did you say was the additional road improvements that included East Tiffany? Or up to East Tiffany?
That would be the Phase 2. That's a part of this application. So it's essentially this Phase 1, we're completing La Loma, the loop of La Loma and West La Loma. That's the contract that was approved tonight. And in addition, some of the smaller neighborhoods off of West La Loma, mostly on the northern section. This Phase 2 will-
But East Tiffany is not off of La Loma.
That's correct.
So I, did I miss the reference of what was being fixed in East Tiffany?
Well, you said El Pavo.
You said El Pavo, but did I hear East Tiffany at some point?
That's part of, that is part of Phase 2.
Is that a public road?
Yes.
East Tiffany, behind the gate is a public road?
Albert, how can it be, yeah, it's gated.
That's not a public-
Am I thinking the wrong road name?
And that's off of Rod Bowdre, not La Loma.
I'm thinking of the road that connects off of Rod Bowdre down to, is that west?
It's the east side of Tiffany, but it's Sierra, Sierra Grande.
Okay. We can have this discussion because David's not here tonight. So I just want to clarify that.
And I apologize if I'm using the wrong street name there.
But you're right, it's the east, it's not Tiffany Farms, it's Tiffany Farms East.
It's the-
It's Tiffany West and Tiffany East, and this is Tiffany East.
The smaller neighborhood west of Rod Bowdre down towards Folsom.
Right. Sierra-
So Tiffany West.
Sierra Glen, Sierra Grande.
So the main road in Tiffany West, you're saying? Okay.
Tiffany East. Tiffany East, it is. You're talking about-
Tiffany, okay.
Sierra Grande Circle, Cordova Glen, and Sierra Glen. Those three.
The neighborhood is what you're describing, not the road. Okay.
I want to make sure I'm giving you, I'm just-
Yeah, it's Tiffany East. But those are the three streets that are included.
Tiffany West, Mayor.
Tiffany West.
Okay, Tiffany West then, Sterling Park, Tiffany West Way, Black Coral Way.
Well, Tiffany West runs right through the middle of it. That makes total sense. Okay.
Yeah, I apologize.
I was just saying, if we have gates up, that's usually not public streets behind it. Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Albert? I think the thing to point out here when it comes to sidewalks and road repairs is in the first year, we actually, this entire amount went to one project to speed it up. And I think since then, we've come up with some more creative ways to spend dollars on infrastructure projects. And that's why you see things like Chase Drive or graffiti and trees and things like that are things that we also agree are important along with roads and sidewalks.
Hard infrastructure.
Right. But this is relatively about the same amount that we've been spending each year. It's been about a million bucks since we started. Thank you.
And lastly, there's $350,000 that goes towards the general administration of the fund, which covers a variety of things. It covers legal fees, covers staff costs, printing of the mailer that we sent to all residents, et cetera.
That's not your last slide though, right?
It's not.
Okay. I heard last thing.
And then council had a desire to set aside some funding for future legacy projects. And you had anticipated putting approximately $1.8 million into that legacy project bucket this year. There's a few staff recommended items that are listed that are related to some existing legacy projects that are going on. So this is just an example of some of the pre-development studies and other design and planning work that's anticipated to happen in fiscal year 17, 18.
Don't leave that. Not in mine, sorry. That's why I asked if we were supposed to have a piece of paper.
This PowerPoint was part of the agenda packet, but-
Okay. I didn't get that part. It's okay.
Isn't now the time to put in the request from the staff, from the council?
We're almost there.
But that is the next one, if you want to know there. Go ahead.
Okay.
You're almost there?
I am, I promise.
Keep taking notes, but go ahead.
I got it.
Linda, you're good?
I got it.
Okay. So city council requests, just for you, Bob. We do have one on the list so far. I did hear from Councilmember McGarvey that he would like to have $50,000 to begin a Veterans Monument Study to not only look at what type of monument would be suitable, but as well as the location, et cetera. And I'm not sure if there's any other council requests that you would like to add as part of the discussion that we'll have on May 15.
I had a couple, but Linda, did you have anything in addition?
Yeah, I think one that I really want to get, to make some progress on is to work towards a hacker lab incubator for teens. We've talked about it, and we've talked about it relative to a specific piece of property. And that would be the one that needs to have progress today before, while the momentum is there and the time is ripe.
Do you envision this as being a study or?
A plan.
A plan, okay.
From my perspective, studies and plans go hand in hand. But I don't think we need to spend that amount of money. Planning for a teen incubator. Thank you.
So I said two, but I had three. And these might, the first one might be addressed in the regular budget. But we have a strategic plan around asset-based community development. So the work that Lorian's been doing in Lincoln Village and Cordova Meadows in looking at at least doubling the number of neighborhoods that we're working with through that program. And from a staffing cost, that would be a general fund plan. But I don't know if the expansion of it could go through here or at least some of the supporting programs to it. But I'll leave that up to Cyrus to figure out if that's general fund, city budget or not. But then two other ones that I wanted to, that I brought up in my speech in February. One was doing college visits for either every fourth grader or in working with the education forum, but starting in the fall, that we pick a grade in this city where every student in this city visits a college. And then the other one is probably $20,000 for a college savings program for students. And this would probably be administered by a local nonprofit. Probably the Falls Cordova Community Partnership has expressed interest in doing it. They didn't propose it. But I think with some minimal costs and finding a couple of classrooms and teachers that want to work with them and, you know, start with 50 to 60 kids and start to build a program. And there are some great models in the Bay Area that have been doing this with city funds and with local nonprofits. And there's actually federal funds that you can match to this, assuming the president doesn't cut them, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to add a little bit to the not money, just a little more explanation. The Veterans Monument Study, most cities have a wall, a plaque, a monument with the name of the veterans from that city. Even non-cities like nonprofit, excuse me, I mean, organizations in bedroom communities like Fair Oaks, they have a place for their veterans' names to be placed. They don't have to be dead to be on the, on that list.
Fortunately.
Interesting, huh? Well, we have that form that people fill out and they send in to the City Hall here. And we have a place on it and a quest, a request of whether or not the person died in uniform or in active duty. And one of them sent in, and he said, "Not yet." I said, "Okay." Well, so he's still listed on the list. But it will be for that. And whether it be, what kind of a plaque or monument it would be with the names of the veterans- But it will be for that, and whether it be, what kind of a plaque or monument it would be with the names of the veterans. We want to get as many veterans as we can. We also want to leave a lot of room for those who wouldn't be on the first list. And it wouldn't have to be where you find a lot of them in a cemetery. It could be in the, front of the headquarters building at Nather. There are many places you could place a plaque or a monument like that. But that is one of the reasons I put in for this, because it is something I think we need to do for Rans Cordova, is get our Rans Cordova veterans and get a list of them. So that's what this is about.
Definitely honoring people before they pass.
It's a good idea.
Monuments like that, or naming schools. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a, Janine?
I'm just going to briefly go over the next couple opportunities that we have. So the next city council meeting where we will discuss the Community Enhancement Fund applications is May fifteenth. The focus on that will be on those projects that are on the recommended list. And I will also add to that the council requests that we've heard tonight. Assuming we get through that, we can also discuss the department projects as well, if you have specific questions regarding those. There's also two budget work sessions, one on May twenty-third and one on May twenty-fourth. So if decisions haven't been made yet, as of the May fifteenth meeting, decisions for the Community Enhancement Fund could be made on either May twenty-third or twenty-fourth with the goal of adopting the overall city budget, which would include the Community Enhancement Fund on June fifth.
And just as a reminder, the reason there's not an early May meeting is the majority of the council will be on a lobbying trip in DC.
So the May first city council meeting was canceled.
Because I think four of us are going, yeah.
Three.
You're not going?
David's not going.
Oh, he's not? Oh, okay. That'll be the first year. Okay.
It is.
Okay.
That's all I have this evening, and I'll be back on May fifteenth.
With hopefully a little bit smaller of a binder.
Right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to council requests for future agenda items. Speak now or hold your peace till next time? No? Okay. And with that, we stand adjourned.